Tonight, we're going to start with the FY 2022 budget hearing, which is public. And we have Mitch Baikowski that will be taking questions later on. And wait now, do you want to start?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. And if during the public hearing, people want to email questions, the email address is And just, I'll say this at the end also, any questions that we don't get to this evening because of timing, or people watch this, are watching this later on a tape, or on a feed later, we will respond to all those questions. You can just send those questions to that email address at any time. Tonight, I have the preliminary budget for FY 2022, which I have to say to you, at this time, we don't have any idea about the revenue sources for that fiscal year. And so, this is always a preliminary budget. This is more preliminary than most years as a result of the pandemic. We hope to get a clearer picture on revenue sources as we approach town meeting in the spring, but that all is to be determined by factors that people already are aware of. And so, this is meant to be a high-level summary of the budget, of the beginning of the budget process, and these deliberations will continue. They'll be, we have a subcommittee that's already met with our chair, Wendy Happel, and committee member Danielle Grafton. And we will continue to meet. We'll also meet with the Town Finance Committee and other groups. And again, as we march towards the town meeting, these preliminary numbers will become hopefully more and more in focus. And hopefully tonight, you will get an idea of where the preliminary numbers come from, and some of the things that we know that we have to anticipate in the next fiscal year. And it does feel strange to be doing this at this time, when we just actually had this year's fiscal year budget approved in this room just a couple of months ago, a couple of weeks ago, at a special town meeting. So, but, we're required to do this by the town charter. We have certain deadlines that we have to meet, and so therefore, we need to do this this evening. So, the FY 22 budget of a proposed $26,826,711 includes assumptions like we will be in person next year, and that we will also need certain budget allocations to meet the needs of certain increases in our population in the district, and there will be certain fixed and mandated costs that will have to be addressed in any budget. So, to that end, I talked about increased populations. Our English learner population continues to grow, although we did add a position, positions last year to help address this need. We are currently at a 1 to 34 student-to-teacher ratio for our English language learners, and we anticipate the need will continue to be there. These numbers will fluctuate, and so, they could go up, or they could go down. This time gives us more time to determine the exact number as we head to town meeting. The addition of a person at the secondary level would create a better support for our students, our English language learners, and we would be more in line with a 1 to 29 ratio to support those numbers. Other positions are kindergarten, teacher, and a paraprofessional. If we do nothing, we anticipate that our numbers will likely be at about 27. 2016 was actually, there were 20 more births in Abington than usual. Those kindergartens are now coming to kindergarten age as they, as we approach the next school year. We have privates that are, that have pre-K students now. And so, what we will do is, as we approach the opening of the school year, we will check all of those numbers, and we'll make a final determination on the need for this. But nobody, nobody would want to have 27 kindergarteners in the same room, especially coming out of the condition we're coming in, in terms of the supports they're going to need. Similar, grade one, we have students in private kindergartens. We have people that are keeping their kindergartners home. I'm sorry, yeah, grade one. If we do nothing, we anticipate we would have 26 in a classroom. Adding a teacher in this area would bring it to 22. We will know ultimately because of research that's done by the administration at the Beaverbrook Elementary School in working with the local privates to see how many students we will anticipate we will have. So, we, not only do we, we track the number of students we anticipate coming through a demographic study that you'll see under informational at the end of the packet, we also, we need to be more accurate because we have people moving in, moving out, and people that are in private placements right now that we wouldn't know about unless we contact those placements and work closely with them to determine the number. Next position, the next slide, would be a special education teacher at the Beaverbrook Elementary School. This will, this, this person would provide partial inclusion services to students with moderate special needs, who do not meet the criteria to be in a sub-separate classroom. The next position is a STEAM teacher at Abington Middle School. We currently have 27 students in those classes. This would reduce the number to 23. And by adding this, we also create flexibility in the middle school schedule, because we currently have people teaching not out of area, but we have science teachers, for example, and this is covered by other teachers that we would be, it would make the schedule easier to work and accommodate the needs of students in our groupings and our teaming at the middle school by adding this. What we try to do is, we try to have a very competitive program of studies, but we are not a large district. We're average small, so in order to do that, we sometimes have to have people teach this way to offer all the programs we have. The next position would be a computer network technician. With the move, we needed this before the move, to the heavy reliance on technology. At the last school committee meeting, I gave you the statistics on the work that the technology office does with a very, very limited number of people. What they've done is amazing and, you know, fairly miraculous. However, adding support in this area means more bang for our buck with the technology that we have, with the number of users we have. We have hundreds of educators and thousands of students, and we've got an office of really rich, Oliver and Vicki. And Vicki's primary responsibility is teaching people how to use the technology, and so, they're stretched thin. These other positions are positions that we need. We just don't need them as much as those previous positions. And so, this is the process that takes place between now and, again, the time we finalize the budget, deliberating on these things. When you weigh these against having the large sizes in kindergarten or grade one, or the need to support our English language learners, and you see the numbers that we have in that area, these things, although they're needed, are not needed as much as those things. And so, the addition of a history teacher at Abington High School, of another English language education teacher at Abington High School, and even hopefully offering a class in Portuguese. Abington Middle School, adding, adding an English language education teacher. At the elementary level, adding a specialized math tutor, music teacher, an adjustment counselor, and a special education, an additional special education teacher. And then, across the district, an English language education tutor. Again, these are all things we need, but if you remember that first page, having that teacher in place at the secondary level for English language education, and then having the kindergarten numbers and the first grade numbers became our priority in our initial deliberations, it's certainly up for further discussion. And so, there are probably 20 more positions that we could offer that would be good for kids, but these are the ones that emerged as the top priorities. Because in terms of support for our budget, in a good year, it's, it's, it's difficult to get, get, add positions. So, the next slide, we, I talk about the increases by major category. There is a line-by-line budget book that's available to people, that people can look at each of the columns and the rows, and what's been estimated to date. And again, those become more clear as we approach the next fiscal year. In the salary account, we anticipate the 150E and contractual obligation line. That's the, chapter 150E is the, is the statute in Massachusetts that's an enablement to negotiate with the collective bargaining groups. And then, we have contractual obligations that are going to increase because of the existing agreements that we have, and that number is $598,323. The initial, those new positions, I mentioned in the first part of the presentation, come to an estimated $360,690 for a total increase of $959,013. In terms of programs of the districts, we've got an estimate of what our special education tuitions will be of $402,999. That number can literally change every day, depending on the placements of our students, certainly every week or every month. Our circuit breaker offset is currently estimated at 70%. That's a fairly, I don't, I don't want to call it conservative estimate. It's, it's, I think, a fair estimate. I know Felicia's probably taken that from information she's gotten from Desi.
I apologize, Peter, that's 65%.
Okay.
Which is a conservative estimate.
Okay. So, this, this slide represents a 70%. It should be a 65%. And then Felicia, the $76,508, is that reflective of 65%?
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
So, apologize for that typo. This means that we anticipate we would be getting less in circuit breaker reimbursement that we're currently getting by 60, by $76,508. And 65% is a, is a more conservative estimate. That's a number that will also fluctuate as we get closer and get more numbers from the state in terms of revenue. However, that is an area that the state has consistently wanted to and tried to fund to the extent that they can. Increases by major category continuing on. We have a transportation contract that has to go out to bid again. So, transportation contracts can last three years. After that, each year, the committee can exercise the right to extend it by another year, two times, so that if that happens over two years, that's a five-year agreement. And what generally happens is your transportation agreement goes up when you go out to bid. And so, that's the estimate that Felicia has applied for going out to bid for a new transportation agreement. Special education transportation is also a very fluid number, depending on where students are, are traveling, at $21,678 for a total increase of $186,122. So, for the preliminary budget, it's a total increase of 5.8%, or an increase of $1.4 million to get to the preliminary budget number of $26,826,711. I'm sorry, $26,826,711. So, I know I jogged through that very quickly, but the reason I did that is because I know that, you know, we're facing so many unknowns at this time, and there is a higher-level detailed document that's certainly open to the entire public. And we're going to be available for questions for as long as, as people wish, as we go through this process. So, can I answer any questions from the committee? And then, we do have a, an open email for people to access.
Peter, just to clarify, the list here are these six positions that we're proposing, those in order of priority, one through six, or is it just those six?
I would certainly say the top three are in priority order.
Okay.
And then, the ones that follow are, are pretty close to priority order, likely, at this point.
Okay. So, say, for instance, we determine that we don't have the need at Beaverbrook?
Yep.
For those positions, or, or one, or whatever it may be, then are we looking at these considered positions, like in priority order of what maybe would be next that we would add?
We could substitute something else in.
Okay. Thank you.
This doesn't commit anyone to anything this evening. What we need, the goal for this evening is to submit a number for the next operating budget, and that's a place to start, and then, and then the pieces become clear and can move within and underneath that number.
Okay, thank you.
Peter, Felicia, the transportation number, so, is our, I don't keep track of the years, but this is not one where we increase it by a year. It's up for a new contract this year?
Okay.
And I'm guessing that number's based on what the market is kind of out there?
Correct. So, we will be going out to bid. We, we do a collaborative bid with Whitman Hansen, and we will be going out later in the spring. One of the pieces that I will most likely be asking the committee, and then subsequently town meeting, is to go out to bid on a five-year bid, and that, when you do a five-year bid as opposed to a three-year, the increase is actualized over all five years?
Okay.
As opposed to three?
Mm-hmm.
We see pretty, we see less increases in year four and five, because they've paid for the equipment, for example, in years one through three. So, it equalizes the cost of the contract over five years as opposed to three.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
If the committee has any more questions, I certainly want to take them. I do have one question already that was emailed in. I want to make sure I covered it. Okay. So, this is a question from Melanie Whitney, a parent in Abington. She had, the first question, I really already answered in, in the presentation. It was a question about the NSDEC study and enrollment in grades K and 1, and we have homeschool families, and how do we estimate those numbers to be sure we're ready for the increased possible numbers? And I, I think I covered that for people. The second question is, I didn't see references of class size and/or space by student in the materials. The Beaverbrook is unique, that has 40% in-person enrollment. We cannot maintain six feet, the six feet that many districts exceed, even in the higher person enrollment. Is there a long-term plan to reduce class sizes, or produce, or provide more space per student, so children and educators can have physical space needed to remain safe at school even after this pandemic is under control? It seems that Abington may be behind other districts with the space, which may contribute to the spread of the illness as well. So, as you saw, our, our budget priority was increasing the, the support at the elementary level to reduce class sizes. We have the room at the Beaverbrook right now to accommodate those two additional positions. We don't have room to add more. It's cost prohibitive to, to build out space at the Beaverbrook without doing an SBA project. It's also cost prohibitive to build out that space without the teachers, without the funding for those teachers. So, that is already a priority that we have, but we are limited in, in terms of what we can do at that building with the number of classrooms and teachers, again, because it just, it's not affordable for us to add a teacher at, at every grade level to spread the students out further. We aren't actually behind, in my mind, in terms of space. The, we, the privates have a better number in their classrooms by, by virtue of the fact that it's completely controllable through the privates, through, they're, they're funded through those, those private monies that people provide, so they can set those budgets based, and what they charge people, based on the exact size that they want to have in those classrooms, and, and people pay a premium for those class sizes. And then, other public schools, the schools that have more space are not because their buildings are larger. The, the truth is, is those schools have more space because people, they have a decrease in the number of people that live in those communities compared to when they built those schools. So, they have extra classrooms because they don't have a, a school-age population that's living in that town anymore, at the same, at the same increase rate that we have had. We have had growth in Abington, which is generally a good thing for a community, and people can debate about how much growth is good and how much growth is bad. The fact is, we have had growth. We have had an appealing program for our families to come to from private schools. And so, as everyone knows, we have had an increased population size with the same size and the same dimensions of classrooms and buildings that, that other people have around the South Shore. So, it is something that we would want to improve on, but I don't imagine that we will have the resources, again, without an SBA project. And then, we would also have to find the resources to hire all of the additional teachers to be in those classrooms. The third que, the next question is, I saw that a number of staff adds for the next fiscal year, but I didn't see anything specific to the projected mental health concerns in the coming years. Does Abington feel we're well-equipped for the needs going forward of a population of children who grew up through a pandemic, either through programs or personnel? We never feel as though we have enough support in this area when we come back full in person, and even, even today, when we're not full in person, it's all hands on deck in terms of trying to see to the mental and the social, emotional health needs of our, of our children. I think now that I've made the budget presentation, you saw that there is a position that we were looking for in terms of an adjustment counselor, but when we're talking about the class sizes that I described at the elementary level, we have to rely on all hands on deck and the existing mental health staff to take care of the needs of the children, so that we don't have 27 and 28 kindergarteners and first graders, or we don't have enough support for our English language learners. So, I, I've answered those questions, and if I haven't, Melanie, please contact me. I, I would be happy to, to spend more time on them. Do you have other questions?
Peter, I was just going to say, I mean, I've been on, I'm not on the budget subcommittee this year, but I have been for the previous three. And I mean, being on there, you always want more, but you have to prioritize where you want to have unlimited funding. The town will never approve unlimited funding, so I mean, I think that's some of the biggest thing we're laying out, the reason why, like I was going to say, the adjustment counselor was there as I liked to have, but other things took precedent over it essentially.
Thank you.
Exactly.
So, I could, if I could request that we close the public hearing, and we go into the regular session.
Okay. Do we have to make an adj, like, make a motion?
No, thanks, I think you just say, you open the regular session.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. So, right now, we are going to close the public budget hearing and move on to the regular meeting. Should we get right into it?
Sure.
So, at this time, we need to do a reading and approval of the minutes from November 24th, 2020. And if I can get a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And next, we have the November 17th, 2020 minutes. If you flip that over, and if I could have a motion to approve those minutes.
As long as I'm able. I don't necessarily know the, remember the rules. I showed up here at town meeting, I wasn't able to be at the, at the meeting prior.
You, you can, you can still vote on them?
Okay.
Because you're voting on the accuracy. A lot of times, people abstain, but they don't have to.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve them.
And I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Thank you. So, next, we have the report of principal, of the principal of the Abington High School for an update on testing and student activities. Mr. Bourne is on his way up.
While Jonathan is setting himself down, I can just, full disclosure, I can admit that the typo on the PowerPoint was mine and not Felicia's.
Whitney, it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I guess I'm coming through loud and clear. Thank you for having me up. Just a brief update on some of the events and activities at the high school. Most interestingly, and kind of news today would be with testing. As it presently stands, Abington High School is poised to administer the PSAT exam to any interested juniors on Tuesday, January 26th. We sent two communications out to our families once before the break and once after the break. 38 students have enrolled in this test, and interested families can still submit through our website, registration to sign up for the PSATs. If there are any parents or students that are having difficulty doing that, they should contact the high school, other school counselor to do that. Because it is on a Tuesday, and this was a date that was decided by the college board that it would be on a Tuesday period in the story, any green cohort students would still be eligible for that test. We would be offering transportation from the high school to the Folio Building, where it will be administered. Our preference is for students to be able to get themselves to the Folio, but if they can't, we can accommodate that. And wave cohort students would be able to take the test on that day as well. We had intended to give this, the school committee update on MCAS. The only update is that the MCAS exams continue to get delayed. We had prepared that, in that same letter about PSATs, to mention testing in ELA and math, MCAS, in January. That was delayed by the state till May, prior to the winter break. We had today, Ms. Clemmons, the assistant principal, as we were actually planning to do MCAS testing for students who needed to do retakes, I received word that the commissioner's going to recommend that those not occur at this time for seniors. It hasn't been approved, but I think we can reasonably anticipate that those MCAS tests will be delayed. As of right now, the only MCAS tests that are scheduled will be math and English in May, and the biology in June. So, that's our, our testing update at the school. National Honor Society induction will be moving forward. We haven't set a date. We are looking at Thursday, February 11th, but we will update the committee on precisely when that is. We had two delays in getting the applications in, one with weather, and the second with remote learning. We will likely be doing a prerecorded ceremony with individual outreach to inductees from current NHS members. The current members have been incredibly thoughtful and hardworking at the way they're going to try to best replicate that important ceremony for those inductees. The Abington High School- The Abington High School Faculty Council will be looking at the applications next week. And we aim to notify those inductees before the weekend of next week, before Martin Luther King Weekend. We will be sending a letter out to senior parents and the community about senior activities. Now that January has set the 2021 year, we will be discussing some of the activities and events that we're going to try to plan for seniors. We are continuing to plan and make considerations as best as possible for a prom or some sort of formal dance. As everyone can imagine, this is challenging, given the uncertain shifting conditions ahead of us. It is distinctly and squarely on the radar of the senior class and the senior class advisor to trying to do something. The shape of that is yet to be determined. And there will also be letter, the letter will also address things like senior T-shirts, yard signs, and some of the other ceremonial aspects of senior year that many people come to expect. The silence prior to this is more like a duck paddling underwater. You see the sounds, but they've been working really hard at trying to figure out what they can do in the midst of restrictions and social distancing. There will be a drama production of a musical, Working, which Mr. Shannon and Ms. Tomlin have been hard at work doing auditions remotely and virtually. They were able to get a unique license to record and then broadcast the, the musical in late April. So you could imagine most productions have to be done live and they don't allow that. But the, uh, production companies and the license holders have been very flexible with schools to allow them to do these types of productions. So that work is underway and ongoing. The students are still participating in those dramatic productions and, and Working looks like a really neat musical. It's a bunch of interviews that have been converted into a musical. So it really suits itself well to the circumstances where there's a lot of vignettes from individual actors. In athletics, the winter sports tryouts have been completed. There is a girls varsity basketball team, a boys varsity JV and freshman basketball team, and an ice hockey team. Games start this week. There's still no fan, family attendance, as, as we had discussed in concert with the South Shore League. We do wanna ensure student safety. Those do begin. Home basketball games will be livestreamed in partnership with Abington Cam and over YouTube for free. Home hockey games will be livestreamed through a party called Live Barn for a subscription. Just to clarify why the difference is because Abington Cam is here and the home basketball games will be here. We have control over who we contract with. We're very fortunate to have a great partnership with Abington Cam to do that. And Live Barn is, I, I think, a, a known commodity in the hockey community for streaming games. Because our home ice games are at Rockland Rank, not our, our domain, we're not able to determine what that livestream program is. So that's kind of a quick snapshot of where we stand for testing, athletics, and other activities at Abington High School.
Peter, I just had an MCAS question, not necessarily specific to high school, but I don't know if either of you know the answer. Given that the commissioner significantly is going to reduce the length of the MCAS test as well as hold districts harmless for this year, if we're underperforming, do districts have the option to just forego testing of their students? Is there a penalty if we chose to skip it?
With the recent update that just came out today, I don't know the answer to that question. Previous the answer, previously the answer was no. But I don't know what shifts and changes may be taking place currently. We have a, just before leaving for this meeting, we were, we got notice that there's a meeting with the commissioner on Tuesday at 3:30. We've, we've got conflicts. We're gonna make sure somebody's tuned in.
I guess a question I have is if more parents, and maybe you can get this at your meetings. I don't know the answer, who has this answer. But if, if more parents decide to opt out of MCAS testing this year, which I know is individually their right, does that have an effect on the district as a whole? In the past, it had. There has been some effect. But I'm wondering, given the, just the state of where everything is, the share that there may in fact be parents who say, no, thank you. And what does that mean for us?
It's a great question, and the way you answered it historically, you know is exactly right. And going forward, again, you know, for what is shifting underneath us right now, I don't know what they would say. But it needs to be asked, so I appreciate that you're raising it.
Ms. Abrams.
Do some studying.
Sorry, Peter. Would the high school, the only pieces is as we currently understand, the current junior class would be scheduled to take the ELA and math MCAS and may as part of their competency determination for graduation in 2022. So a, as it currently stands, that would be our understanding for the high school.
That makes sense.
So while it won't impact our participation numbers, it may negatively impact the student graduation status.
I guess, Peter, if you hear anything amongst the other superintendents, I'm just, I guess maybe I'm worried more about the three through eight population or anybody that doesn't need it for graduation. If, if we're not going to really get much information and the test is gonna be reduced as is and there's been so much turmoil, like what, what, why are we doing it? And what will happen if, I know we can't say that we're not going to do it, but if families choose that, that you, what would happen, you know?
I'm glad that Jonathan Bourne made that point, because that's key. And with regard to the other grades, I'll, I'll get back to the committee with more information as it's available and try to pursue the answers.
There's already so much time being missed educationally anyway. Now we're gonna add, and I'm assuming you'd have to do it on your cohort days in the building, which could wipe out three straight, I mean, I, I, three weeks of nothing, so.
That'd be interesting.
I know everybody's feeling about those up here anyway, so, this year anyway.
And I think in, in other communities, it seems, you know, what you're, what you're saying is completely logical.
TBD, I guess. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions?
The only thing I just wanted to add to what Jonathan provided was, you know, I'm saying this not so that, to, to, to necessarily recognize the individual work that's going on behind the scenes, but it's also productive to do that. The amount of work that's going into the safety and following guidelines that have been provided by the medical community and the MIAA and DESI has been just a testimony to how much these people care about the kids we serve. Just the, you know, it's counterintuitive to want any of these things to take place, obviously, during a pandemic and, and, but if you can do them safely so that kids can be engaged, then they're things that you want to do. And the day that, the day that we believe that they can't be done safely with our kids is, is the day we, we pause or the day we stop. So I just need to say that.
Jonathan, my only question for you is regards to the games. Is it just varsity that will be played on, that Abington Cam will be doing? Or will it be JV and freshmen as well?
I believe, Peter and Lisa, correct me if I misunderstood this. I know, I know for certain the varsity games will be broadcast, I think in partnership with Abington Cam. I believe there's also the robotic camera that can follow the action, but it's not manned. So that may be an option for JV and freshman games.
I was just wondering, because you said all the games, so it made me.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
But, all right. So we'll be able to just find out more information about that?
Yeah. Athletic Director Peter Strino, today, I believe, is doing a, a test run of some of this technology. And pending that feedback and test, would be sharing with the community how to, to go about to view these games.
Awesome. Thank you.
Also, just another thank you to Abington Cam for helping with that. Parents can't be there.
Right.
Or relatives, it's nice that they provide this assistance.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jonathan. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So next up, we have the report of the superintendent of schools.
So this is the portion in the regular session that I, that I need to ask the committee to consider these following recommended actions. Certainly, if, if you have additional questions on them or if you're, if you're able to consider them, we'll submit them pending your vote to the town.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to submit to the annual town meeting warrant a proposed FY 2020 to budget figure of $26,826,711 as the amount requested for the school department's operating budget?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, if I, and I apologize. Do you mind if I just tell people what this one is?
Of course.
Sorry. The first one was a part of the budget presentation that people saw at the beginning. And this next one is about transportation services to students to North Oak Aggie.
So would someone like to make a motion to submit to the annual town meeting warrant a proposed figure of $14,000 as the amount requested for student transportation services to Abington students attending out-of-district vocational schools as non-resident students for the 2021, 2022 school year? The school committee or their designees shall be authorized to expend from this fund or act on anything relative thereto.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This, um, this next one is an account that collects the money levied against violators who sell tobacco products in Abington. Those, those two underage people who purchase it. And it goes into an account for substance abuse and prevention or to buy materials for substance abuse and prevention.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion for the annual town meeting warrant on article to continue a revolving account in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, set account to be funded by the fines levied against Abington businesses which violate state or local tobacco control laws, bylaws, and regulations to be expended by the Abington School Department to fund substance abuse present, prevention programs not to exceed $8,000 for the ensuing fiscal year or take any other action relative thereto.
I'll make the motion, Wendy.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The next item under my agenda is non-collective bargaining hourly staff. And Felicia has provided a handout for you for this evening. And Felicia, you wouldn't mind just giving a quick?
Sure. As of January 1st, the minimum wage was increased in Massachusetts to $13.50 an hour. This handout is reflective of increasing those hourly employees that were below the minimum wage and increasing them to 1350 and also increasing their steps that are connected to those positions at the same amount of the increase to get to the minimum wage.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the hour, hourly rates for non-collective bargaining staff due to the minimum wage increase as presented by Dr. Michelle?
I'll make the motion.
I'll, and second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Then the next item that we have is a request for a capital planning committee representative from the town, asking if a school committee member would sit on that committee. I believe this is going to be an advisory committee to take a look at the capital planning projects across the town and be able to, to make a recommendation on, on which ones go to the top of the list. So we really don't need a, a, a vote. I just need to ask that the chair provide a, a member of the committee that, that might perhaps be interested in serving on this committee.
Great. Thank you. Would anyone like to serve on the committee? If you do, you can think about it and email me and then we can, I'll email it to Peter. Is that okay? That way they can think about it. Perfect. Okay. So next, we have James with the homeschool request.
Yeah. So that James doesn't have to take the long walk to the microphone. You have a homeschooling, he's here if you have any questions, but you have a homeschooling request and you pack it. And unless there are questions, I'd ask that the committee please consider it.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the additional home education programs for the 2020, 21, 2021 school year as recommended by Dr. Robbins.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So the next item is an update on the principal search committee work that we've been doing. I am pleased to announce that the out-of-district and the AEEP coordinator position will be filled by Ms. Annie Robinson. She comes to us, she's earned a bachelor's degree in science from the University of New Hampshire in child family studies. She continued her education at Fairfield University, where she earned a master's of the art of education, majoring in special education. She also earned a master in occupational therapy from the University of New York or from, I'm sorry, from New York University. Ms. Robinson is currently the coordinator of district services for North River Collaborative. This is a position that she's held since July of 2018. She began her work in, as, in, in education and with children as an occupational therapist. Later came to North River Collaborative as an occupational therapist. And I just, I wanna thank the members of the search committee that helped us and participated in this process. Margaret Cipriano, school committee member Chris Coyle, Ashley Griffin, Casey McCarthy, Felicia Michelle, Pam Neely, and James Robbins, and Carrie Wilson. Felicia and James facilitated the work, so I wanna, prior to sending the recommendation to me, so I wanna give them an extra thank you for that. She will be starting with us as of March 1st. I'll have her come to a committee meeting to introduce herself as soon as that's practicable. And she's already going to be doing some work prior to March 1st in terms of getting acclimated with, with the new position.
Thank you.
The, the principal search for the high school is, is ongoing. And I, I hope to be back to the committee shortly with a resolution.
Thank you.
This time, I've, I've finished my agenda items, but if I could, I, I just wanna mention two other things that I think are important. They're really the most important things to talk about. And although there's no vote on them, it's just a, it's a bit of a public explanation about the decision to go remote or hybrid. These are times, obviously, I'm understating it, that are stressful and scary. And, you know, we're in the middle of, of hopefully something that ends as soon as possible in, in the spring with vaccinations and, and we can get back or a lot, a lot closer to normal as soon as possible. But for the time being, I realize that we're in a surge. And the decision to come back to school after the, the winter break was, was mine. I talked to the health department probably every day, if not every other day, and that included over the, over the, over the break period, to review numbers and contact tracing. And I wanna thank them and our, our nurses and our administrators and everyone who's working so hard to keep, to keep our kids safe. But particularly, the contact tracing is important to mention because the contact tracing gives us information about where the spread of the virus is occurring. And we are not seeing a spread within the schools. And I just wanna be very upfront and very factual about very important information. As a result of that confidence in where the numbers are coming from, it's provided, and there are no absolutes with safety. And the moment you think that you have an absolute with safety, you're being less safe because you're not being vigilant. But to date, all information points that the source of the spread of COVID in Abington is from outside of the schools. It's from the behaviors of people outside of our buildings, that the schools have been safe places. And not just safe places for our students and our staff, but they're also safe places when our students and staff go home for family members and the community at large. Because during a pandemic, safety is first, and I think all of that. Because during a pandemic, safety is first, and I think all of that, I know all of that needs to be taken into account. And so I know that it's likely during this surge that we're going to go fully remote again, because what happens is, as a part of this process, the quarantine process is so disruptive. It creates an environment where it's not productive to be in school. And unfortunately, we are, we are set with these, I'm tired of using the word pivoting, but we're pivoting all over the place with these options that are one-size-fits-all solutions that don't fit all. We have so many variety of needs in households with families. You know, if you're a family of small children compared to a family of, of children that are older, compared to the needs of individual children within those age groups, compared to the needs of each individual home. And so these solutions that we have to be hybrid or remote, all of these things, nobody, nobody for a second thinks that this is what kids need or is what, what is going to necessarily work for everybody. The only thing that's going to work is getting back fully in person, that's just not possible right now. So I realize that it's likely we're going to go fully remote, but, but that, unless it's unsafe, and then, and that trumps everything, that would be caused by the surge creating quarantine, large quarantine numbers, because that's so disruptive. It gets to a point where it just, it's a breaking, a tipping point that doesn't, that doesn't help anyone. So that's the thinking that goes behind this, and I know and I respect that people are going to agree and disagree with the different points. I wanted to at least try to explain that to people in terms of the thinking and where we are. I can answer, I will, I've been, I've been answering questions about what we've learned and what, and what we do and what changes since March, because what we're doing now is, is very different than what happened back in March. And I, and I estimate that we're not done making changes and adjustments based on this. As a matter of fact, one of the things that's been going on weeks ago, the, there's an acknowledgement that the models that we're using for instruction could be improved. This is our first time through a pandemic, and weeks ago, the committee agreed with the teachers' association to talk about what changes could be made to improve the experience, especially the engagement for our students. And just after that, not knowing this was going to happen, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education changed the regulations on time on learning. They didn't change the amount of time on learning, but they changed how that time on learning is allocated. And they specified, and, you know, the time on learning for engagement in, in this environment that we're in. And so there would, based on that and the need to continually look to improve and do what we can for our students, people can expect changes are coming. And especially in the hybrid model, when students are home on either the Monday, Tuesday, or the Thursday, Friday, depending on what cohort they're in. They can expect in the coming week and a half after the Martin Luther King holiday that they will be able to access, their students throughout the district will be able to access the live instruction occurring via their computers through, through a fully, through the full scheduled day on either the Monday and the Tuesday, or the Thursday and the Friday. And the, the belief is that will create much more engagement. And we spent a lot of time talking about the model we have and the way we got there and what we thought was best and lessons learned. We want to adjust and increase the engagement. But the engagement in this change will only be as good as the ability for students to attend in homes that aren't sitting in front of our teachers in classrooms. So we really want to ask, and we're going to do a lot of messaging about this as it comes about. Again, we have been working with the association on these changes over the last few weeks, and our, and our teachers are going to, this will be new for them, and they'll be taking a look at this more closely in the next week and a half. But they themselves are going to have to pivot in terms of what their practice is and how they accommodate our children who are watching from their homes. And so when, when they start, they're not going to be as good at this as they will be two months down the road, because they've never done it this way before. But immediately, people should feel the benefit of this, especially if they tune in and engage. If people don't open their computers, this won't help, this won't help them at all. So we're hoping that we'll get some engagement with people while they're home and some more routine and some continuity, and we'll, there will be a lot of messaging about this as we approach, but this is as recent as discussions that have been taking place over the last, you know, 24 hours, so, and, and going back several weeks. So I thought it made sense just to, just to do that piece publicly and openly tonight. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you for letting everybody know about that.
I want to, I want to thank every, this committee for the work it's doing. So this, none of you decided to run for school committee in a pandemic.
Some of us decided to run for reelection.
Anyway, I just, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Peter. We appreciate it.
Could I, could I say something? I have a comment, I don't have a question. So regarding the remote and hybrid models, students are pretty adaptable, we're good with either one, we're pretty evenly split. The only thing that annoys us is probably the inconsistency between the two. We've, we've obviously learned to adapt to both, but they each have things that make them tedious. The most annoying thing about hybrid is that we have to quarantine when we come in contact with someone for two weeks, but I mean, that's just precautions, that's a given. And sitting in front of a screen for a long period of time also isn't very ideal. So I mean, whatever you decide to do, students are good with as long as it's consistent.
Samuel, thank you, because what you've raised is, was one of the big problems that we had, that we didn't know until we lived through a pandemic. We had no idea the number of people that would be quarantined.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy.
And that's, so that's, I'm so glad that you brought that up, that's a good point, because what happens in the life of the teacher is they're planning for the in-person kids, they're planning for the kids that are hybrid remote, and then they're planning for another group of students that are quarantined. And so, you know, back in the day, you'd plan for one group of kids, those are the kids that when the bus door opens, they all get off the bus, and that's it. And so that's not happening now. And so this model will benefit those students that are quarantined also, because if you're missing over, over the quarantine period, you'll be able to at least tune in on the computer. And you're right, and that was one of the hesitations to going to this model. Tuning in all day long, period to period, back to back to back, watching a, a video feed on a computer and, and trying to participate that way is difficult. It's difficult on everyone, it's, it's certainly going to be difficult on our students. So points well taken, and, you know, this won't be the perfect solution either. This will improve things. The perfect solution is coming back full in person and then, you know, having a party, because I'm tired of this.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can only really speak for the students, but like you said before, this is sort of a learning experience for everyone, and I feel like it's really tough on the teachers, if anything. But yeah, like I said before, you know, students are good with either one, as long as it's set in stone, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you, Samuel, for that. Okay, so right now, I just want to go over some dates to remember. Well, tomorrow, actually, there is a boosters meeting at 7:00 PM on Zoom. If anybody would like some more information on that, I'm sure they can contact the Abington Boosters, Marlese Merrick, the president of the boosters. Wednesday, January 13th is an in-service half-professional day for staff. Monday, January 18th is Martin Luther King Day, so there'll be no school. Tuesday, January 26th is a regular meeting of the Abington School Committee. If nobody has anything to add, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Thanks to Abington Cam and all the staff that came out tonight.